All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools. Today is August 8th, and would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holla, would you like to do the roll, please?
Sure. Member Lewis?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Asamurai?
Here.
And Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
All right, start by reading our mission statement. It says Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive, small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. I would like to begin by giving an approval of the agenda. A motion for that?
No.
Holla, we'll give it to Holla.
I did not do it.
You didn't? Okay, we'll give it to Molly.
I'm second.
All right, thanks.
It was a tie.
Motion passes. The announcements for tonight are August 14th is our primary election day, August 21st, pardon me? Oh, we did not. We should probably vote. Yep. Sorry, rookie error. Let's vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion passes. The announcements for August, yeah, the announcements for August 14th, our primary election day, August 21st, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is our regular school boarding meeting right here in the community room where we will be canvassing the election results from the 14th. August 28th at 5:30, we'll have a school board work session here in the community room. September 3rd on Monday is Labor Day, a holiday, and the district is closed. September 4th is our first day of school for all our students. September 11th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, is a regular school board meeting also here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondence?
Madam Chair, members, we do not have any correspondence this evening.
All right. Now's the time where we have communication from the board, and we hear any comments from citizens, employee representatives. And at this time, any citizen or employee may ask, may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on the requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone who would like to share? All right, let's keep moving. I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Holla. Second.
This time I did it.
Any discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. But did I need to read what the consent agenda includes? All right, it includes the minutes of the June 12th and 26th school board meetings, and the June 19th work session, a personnel report, and the treasurer's report for May 2018. All right, we'll do some discussion items and information items. Let's start with the report from members of our board. Lori, and you want to start us off?
Sure. Short report tonight, just really spent the last month while we weren't having meetings, reaching out to members of our community and having lots of conversation with community members and parents.
Laura?
Oh, yes, let me see here, lots of communication with community members. You know, specifically, they had a lot of questions about the bond-related things. I also attended the Vote Yes kickoff, and thank you very much, Natty, for representing the board as far as answering questions. I really appreciate that. I think you did a lovely job. And I also attended the mayor and the commissioner forum over at Columbia Heights and the candidate forum here for a school board, and thank you again, Local 710, for hosting that. And in addition to that, last week, I also attended the 916 board meeting as well.
Holla? Hi. So I attended the candidate forum for school board and the Vote Yes community kickoff, and I've connected with a lot of community members, lots of them.
Molly?
I also attended the school board candidate forum, the Vote Yes kickoff, and also attended the mayor and county commissioner forum. And as with most other people, I'm sure, lots and lots of conversations with community members. Last night at the national night out, lots of questions about the bond and campaigning.
Yep. Mine would be very similar. Had lots of questions about the upcoming bond referendum and back-to-school and seeing now some PSAT results roll in and what are those? Just got some of those. And then also attended the Vote Yes meeting. We will, yeah, so that concludes reports from members of the board. And now Superintendent Kelly, do you have an update for us?
Madam Chair and members, I do. I attended an informational meeting along with Xena Stenwick and other interested school districts and the University of Minnesota Research Department regarding participation in a study on the acupuncture exam. Principal Robleski was also there, and the premise of this study would be student readiness for college placement and equity issues in a lens. It was agreed that the school districts would be presented with a proposal from the University of Minnesota, Kari, on this topic later in August, and we'll keep you apprised if we decide to enter into that study. We think it would be better for our students because we don't think it, we think it's a biased gatekeeper. So that's something that will be interesting, and we'll see if it percolates out, and I want to thank Xena and Dan for coming. It was quite an interesting meeting. I attended an internal elections committee meeting for preparation for the school board primary elections that are occurring on August 14th. We have to make sure our safety and security and all of our practices are up for that, and so I want to thank members of that committee that are working on that as well internally. I attended Columbia Heights Booster meeting with the Columbia Heights Schools regarding the activities program and procedures that was held in this room, and it seemed to be very productive, and I want to thank the Booster Club for coming on up. I think we got a lot of things discussed and learned things on, I think, from both sides and both perspectives around the table. And I also want to thank the Boosters for all the support that they give to Columbia Heights students across the spectrum in the areas of activities and programs all year because it really is appreciated and very necessary. I attended the Minnesota School Boards Association Summer Leadership Conference, and there was, it was one really, really packed day. The two major focuses, areas that I found the most interesting out of the sessions were the case laws on what's currently going on at the federal and local court system, on what might impact our school systems, and then there was a huge, huge keynote on school safety and just how prevalent that is in the minds of all school board and superintendents and principals and administration, and I'm sure on the minds of parents and students as well. And Greg Kaufman, the Bloomington Communications Director, who was the director at Columbine, was the keynote speaker for that, and with the help of Director Hennekenz, we are going to have him out to our school, to our school retreat for the administrators in April to discuss what we need to do to update our school safety policies and procedures and probably do an assessment plan with him. So that was, that was a really good day. And then in the last two days, I look, do I look like I have the halo of knowledge? I spent the time with the Minnesota Department of Education on the superintendent's back-to-school conference. And that was school safety, big topic again, from the commissioner on down. They were also talking about learning and leading with an equity lens, and there was a topic of conversation really around the transition to the new ESSA, or the Every Student Succeeds Act, and how that's going to play out. So it was the last back-to-school conference for Director, Commissioner Brenda Casilius, and so everybody gave her a standing ovation at the end. She's been there for eight years, she's done a really fine job. And so that, and I also had an opportunity to meet with the school board chair over the summer and the vice chair just now, and I'd had multiple members of the school board that have reached out to me for conversations, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. That concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Now we're going to have, who do we have? Xena Stenwick, Dan Robleski, Dwayne Burkus, is he here? No? And Michelle DeWitt, come up and give us a update on the E-12 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Vice Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, we're here this evening to present information on the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, which you have in front of you, a draft copy. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and the, this presentation really truly focuses on all of our core values, community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. The governance portion of this presentation, this evening, we're here to present information, and we will be back on August 28th to ask the school board to approve this handbook. So the purpose of this handbook was to really provide easily accessible and comprehensive information for families in Columbia Heights Public Schools with a, with a, with a big focus on consistency of information. So if a parent has children in two different schools, they're hearing the same message and the same policies and the, of course, we have the same school board policies, the same procedures that are happening and taking place across the schools. So the process was, we had representation from all five schools, early childhood and just different district departments coming together to review school board policies, state and federal legislation and laws. We took a look at what some other local districts do for their handbooks, and it was a truly collaborative process across the schools and the district departments, and we were able to reach consensus after a lot of hard work and research and putting the book together. So as you see, the book has different sections. You see on the, the front page, the table of contents. So Principal DeWitt and Principal Robleski and I are going to go through examples and kind of give an overview of each of the, each of the sections. We, I promise you, we won't go through all 44 pages. So section one.
All right, so section one is shared roles and responsibilities, which should look familiar. Most of this is found in school board policy. We go through each group of people, starting with students, which is really aligned to the Code of, Code of Student Conduct. Next is parents and guardians, which the, the main goal in this area is that we have mutual cooperation between buildings, district employees, and parents to cooperate. Teachers, that they provide a well-planned teaching and learning environment for students and that they also enforce the code of conduct for student behavior. Principals, that we formulate building rules and regulations aligned with this new handbook. Principals should also ensure that there, that we've created a warm and welcoming and positive environment for all students. Other district employees, again, reinforcing that we all are here to create a mutual welcoming environment for people in our schools. The superintendent really establishes guidelines and directives to carry out the policy. And last but not least, the school board approves all district policies. Next is the standards of behavior. So in the new handbook, we've really gotten away from number of offenses, and we're now looking at levels of behavior. So the standards of student behavior will fall now into five different levels. Level one being the least disruptive, and level five being a most, most severe behavior. So in the standards of student behavior, we define what each level means, and then we also give very specific examples with interventions for each level. So possible consequences based on the level of offense. So a less severe offense would be reteach, could be reteach the expected behavior, a verbal redirection, it could be changing a seat, could be a reminder, and so on. So very minimal intervention for those type of behaviors. Then level two, again, we define what that level is and then list possible interventions. And the difference with this handbook is this is, this handbook covers pre-K through 12. So when we worked on this, the interventions obviously go all the way from what we would have with a pre-K student all the way up to a 12th grader.
So developmentally appropriate.
Developmentally appropriate. Move into level three behaviors, more severe, and again, examples of interventions that would be used. Level four behaviors, and then level five. The next section is, in, in the handbook, is a pretty clear matrix, and I'll go over that in just a second, but I wanted to cover just a few other areas that are found kind of in my section. One is the incident report form, which would be our reporting of bullying, harassment, violence, and hazing. We also have a specific matrix for transportation, which is, again, pre-K through 12. In the handbook, we have guidelines for discipline with special education students. So again, a very clear example with a chart for principals or administration working with special education students. We have a written copy of the Pupil Fair Dismissal Act. So if an administrator suspends or dismiss, dismisses a special education student, we are required to give a copy of the Pupil Fair Dismissal Act for every suspension. So we also have a copy that's in the handbook. And then the last part, and then I'll go back to the matrix, is the glossary of terms. So there are many, many terms in this handbook, some of which have been used before in policy or in discipline handbooks that we've used in any of one or more of the five schools. However, there are some new terms, and we tried whenever possible to list statute that the term or definition came from. So for example, under bodily harm, physical pain or injury, illness, or impairment of physical condition, and that's, that definition is, comes directly out of Minnesota Statute 609 point 02. So whenever possible, and you'll find that throughout the handbook, we listed statutes or board policy when appropriate. Going back to the matrix, which starts, begins on page eight. This was really, I, I was part of the small group that worked on, on this section. Really important work for developing consistency between the five schools. We all really operated on our own format of discipline. Each individual elementary school, as well as the secondary schools, really operating our own discipline handbooks. So to take five head principals, assistant principals, and directors and get all on the same page with not only which discipline areas we were going to include in our handbook, but also agreeing upon levels to considerable amount of work as well as compromise. So there are, for example, it starts off with abusive language. It gives a definition, student uses verbal messages that include disrespectful or threatening language toward members of a school community. And then you'll see shaded areas, level two or three. So the minimum intervention for that area of discipline would be a level-two consequence, and the maximum would be a level-three. So this is important when you consider is, is an offense a suspendable offense? So you would need to hit a certain level before a student could be put out on a suspension. So that's where the levels come in, is knowing what is the minimum consequence and what is the maximum consequence for each area that we agree to include in this handbook. Plus, having really consistent, hopefully user-friendly terms. They are very user-friendly when you use the glossary for parents and students to understand. The second part of the matrix has police notification. Some of the offenses are required and some are possible. So if it's shaded in required, obviously that's going to be a police referral to our police, one of our two police liaisons. Possible would be based on the severity of the individual offense on a case-by-case basis.
All right, so moving on to section two, it's the one-page district calendar. Of course, the families do receive the full district calendar, but we thought it was important to include the year at a glance in, in section two. Section three is parent information. Now, this is information that most of the schools were already sending out, and so we decided that it was important to, let's just all send out the same message and the same exact, you know, information. So for example, you can see, how do I change, how do I tell the school that I'm changing my address? What's the form? So they can find, you know, pre-K all the way to grade 12, they need that information. What, how do I know if school's going to be closed tomorrow if there's a severe weather? So it lists there all of the different, you know, TV, TV stations that you can look at and what the different notifications are. And again, these are things that apply to all students and families in our district. Winter weather information, accessing parent and student view online. What is the visitor and security process and policy in our schools? Parking, drop-off, and pickup. So we have a lot, you know, with September right around the corner, we've got to train in some new families on the process for that, so we wanted to get ahead of the game and send these out. And then the withdrawal or transfer from school forms and procedures. So that, that parent information is in section three. Section four is other useful and important general information that we thought everyone in the, in the district should, should be aware of. So media release forms, technology usage, personalized learning, cafeteria information. What's the fee for breakfast, for example? What happens with unpaid meal charges? Our equal opportunity policy, our field trip policy and procedure. What happens with severe weather in terms of fire, tornado, and lockdown drills? Information on our health services. Information on lockers when applicable, depending on the grade level. The pledge of allegiance policy and requirement. How do I get, how, permission to leave the building? So if my student has a doctor's appointment, what, how do, what do I need to do for that? The security and safety of the doors and single point of entry of our schools. Required information on testing and assessment. So that portion includes opt-out forms of, how do I opt out? I can't just write it on a post-it note and turn it in, there's a form for that. Required information for Title I. So we wanted to make sure we had this all in one spot. All right, looking at section five?
Section five is regarding attendance, and as you can see, each of our categories with general information really outlines and defines what an absence is and the procedure that parents and guardians need to follow when there is an absence. It also defines clearly for public schools in Columbia Heights, each school, what the parents and guardian responsibilities are, clearly, clearly defines our student responsibilities, and it defines our teachers' responsibilities regarding attendance. We also have, in our classifications of absences, tardies, excused absences, and unexcused absences are all in line with our Policy 503 regarding absences. So this section is a streamline for all schools in our district that clearly defines each one of the categories and classifications of absence, unexcused absences. It also clearly outlines what our procedure is, what a truancy is, when a truancy is filed, and that the truancy is filed with Anoka County Court Systems. So it really clearly defines our, our procedures when it comes to attendance across our district. And section, section six is activities and athletics. It provides a brief overview of what we do offer for public school, our Columbia Heights Public Schools activities and athletics, as well as contact information. Previously, you've received the activities and athletics manual that has been presented earlier this year.
So the plan for the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook distribution is that each family would receive a copy. It will be posted to the website, therefore the links that we have will be active and then translated upon board, board approval. So if there's any questions?
I have a question. The incident report form that I see, I think it's on page 13, I think there might be two 13s in here. But I see the form here, is there any, I don't know if it's in here and I'm not seeing it, but directions on how a student would go about doing that? I know we've had questions in the last year about that, but I just see the form and no kind of explanation about it. Does that make sense? I don't know if it's in here, if it's appropriate.
You can answer that.
When, when students come forth to the administration with a concern, that's when we've all been trained on this form and what is and what isn't. So our administrative team will come forward and pull that reform, that form out, fill it out with the student, and then process that to the district office.
And I'm just wondering if we can kind of have that in here so that the parents, when they're reading this, they understand the process too.
Like adding a paragraph for?
Yeah.
Of instructions or what it is?
This is when it will be, or this is how the students would approach it, just so it's not just the form. There's an explanation.
And maybe that younger students would have assistance as needed.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, that might be obvious for a kindergartner who couldn't even read this.
Well, is it required for the student to fill this out?
No.
So it's not the student who would fill it out? I think that's something that should be stated somewhere in here because that's been circulating a lot.
Yep.
That put the burden on the victim type thing.
A lot of feedback we've gotten.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
That's helpful because we're so used to the form, and so it's nice to get that feedback from someone else who's not constantly seeing these forms.
No, the form in general is not user-friendly. I think especially if, like, looking at it from a student perspective, you know, and I think of if I'm a student and I'm in fifth grade and there's a situation where I'm not feeling comfortable, and I look and say, okay, here's the form I need to fill out. Do I know that complainant means me? You know, it's, there's just some, some terminology, I think, that aren't, isn't student-friendly on the form. And I think, I guess, I, I, really focusing too on, on this form in particular, I agree with the others on just kind of explaining what this is and how it's used. And looking at, and I, I want to take some time, and I'll read through this too, but as we look at some of the bullying and whatnot, you know, can you make an anonymous complaint? Can you, you know, are there things that you can do to report incidents or behaviors? You know, many of our students are using Chromebooks. Is there a, an, an app or other technology that can be used to support, to report some of that same information that's not necessarily just tied to this form?
I'll just reiterate as well that the administrators, if an incident does arise, 99% of the time, will be sitting down with the student, and as you mentioned, you know, a young student or maybe a student who's, you know, not feeling that they can fill out the form. They'll tell their story, and the administrator will be filling it out and then re, reread it out to the student. Is this what you said? Is this how you're feeling? Did I get this right?
I think that's important information to put in the handbook.
Just reiterate that so that parents have that. So just for clarification, from what you're saying, I'm kind of understanding that there are situations where the student has handed the form?
Yep, if an older student wants to just fill it out, it's situational. You all deal with it more than I do.
Right.
Often we'll have parents that will come in too, so we'll give them the opportunity if they want to fill out the form, sitting there in our office. They can, but some will want to take it and fill it out with their child at home at night and then return it back to school the next day. That's very common in elementary school. Sometimes the teacher, the student will approach either their teacher or social worker. So then you'll see at the top, it says student referral, staff referral, parent referral. So sometimes if a staff member is filling it out with a student, they'll check student and then, you know, with, and then they'll write their name as the teacher.
Okay.
Sometimes if a student is just making a general report and it sounds like it, that's when the teacher will take this out and fill it out with them. They may not even use the word bullying, but if that's what they're implying is going on, that's what they typically will fill it out on. But lots of them come through the social workers.
Okay. And then what would happen if a student is reporting something that didn't happen to them but happened to someone else and wants to remain anonymous? Which I'm sure that happens a lot, that kids want to remain anonymous, I don't know if they actually report it.
We, we still fill the form out. We don't, when a student comes forward, we still fill the form out, but we keep the student anonymous. We're not bringing them into the incident per se, but we're always, we, we have at times, students come and report that and want to be anonymous. but we're always, we have at times, students come and report that and want to be anonymous, and we leave them anonymous.
Okay, so there's a place for that.
I do want to say with caveat though, that if it goes to an investigation, then the students would be interviewed as part of the investigation. And that is why some of this on this form is really been reviewed by attorneys, too, as far as things that we need for questions for the investigation so that we can get multiple perspectives from people as well. So, there's both a legal aspect to this and a practical, as a practical man.
Yeah, yes, and like Superintendent did say, is, as we go in and we fill the form out, investigations do, can come forward out of this form. So, then at that point, students will need to be interviewed.
Yeah, but like, it's not like the whole student body will know.
Correct.
I have another question. At the very back, where it says, "Excused absences," number two, religion-related absences not to exceed three hours per week. And I know that that's historically in there because people used to go to services and it was maximum three hours per week. But what about if somebody has to be gone for a whole day because of a religious holiday? Is that like an average or?
Yep, so for example, Eid would be an excused absence.
Okay, even though it exceeds a three hours per week?
I think that one would be more of a, if it's a weekly occurrence, that's what that one would be referring to. If it's every week, where we typically wouldn't see that. It's not very common, where something like Eid that happens, that tends to, when it does fall in the school year, you know, that's a one or two-day absence, depending on where it falls in the week. So, it's not a weekly occurrence.
No, it's not regular. Would that be a good idea to add it in here?
We could be, we could specify more of a weekly occurrence and that other religious holidays are excused.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean the weekly occurrence part, but I mean, like, as another item to state that if there is a religious holiday or a religious event or something, that...
The language that's in here came right out of school board policy. So, it's something that I think the school board should then look at the policy and put the exact language that they would like to use because what we did is we took policy and put it right in the handbook.
I think back in the day, we used to excuse some students on a weekly basis to perhaps have religious education during the day, and I think this was more in line with that, to cover that. So, I think for now, the policy committee can look at that if the board decides, but we could put in a weekly occurrence and that would clarify it if that's all right with the rest of you for now.
The practice is, it is, they're excused, every building. So, we know that. It's just what we did here was just make sure the language was in alignment.
Consistent.
Consistent with the policies.
I think we need to look at our policies.
Yeah, I just made a note. Check Policy 503. Maybe we could just get it in our board packet next time we have one.
That would come through the school board subcommittee.
Policy subcommittee, which I've been on, and I'm like, how did it?
So, there we go. So, Don can make a note of that.
Thanks, Don. All right. Ever evolving. Any more questions?
I appreciate it. I think it's helpful. And as a parent who's had students in several buildings every year, I think it's really helpful.
I just have one more thing to say. First of all, I'd like to thank the team in front and the other people that worked on this because we're really going to submit this to the Department of Human Rights as well. And what we're trying to do is decrease alternate, decrease suspensions and find more ways to keep kids in class. And so, that matrix and some of the things that are there really are very important work. And I'm sure that we'll get feedback, both through the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and the Minnesota Department of Education. As with anything, it's in its, it says draft. We'll try it, we'll take it this year and see how it goes. It's procedural in nature, and ordinarily, the board does not approve procedures. And we just bring it and we see if there's any changes, which we'll get back to that once we've done this beyond the first year. But for now, we want to make sure that, since it is our first time with a consolidated handbook that the board sees it, that it's aligned with school board policy and that we can also inform the two departments that it's been reviewed at the board level. But I'm thinking in the future, as we go in a year or two, it would be more just back to our usual information updates on here's changes that might occur or something that's come up that's a particular law. So, that's why it's here tonight, because it is so brand-new. And thanks to all that's worked on it. And thanks for all the board feedback, too.
Thanks for the huge undertaking.
And just one last word. I know you mentioned bringing it back to us on the 28th. Our next board meeting's actually on the 21st, and we have the work session on the 28th. So, those are actually a little bit different than normal.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to welcome up Lindsay Bennett to discuss the employee handbook. She feels a little bit like a game show host right there. Come on down.
Come on down. My turn. Vice Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. In your packet is the 2018-2019 Employee Handbook. We've had this handbook for about ten years, so there's very minimal changes from year to year. This year, we just updated some staff contacts as people have left and come into the family. Information on media releases. And if you're contacted by the media, we just want to be a little more specific on what your role is as a staff member. Verify that the policies are up to date. And then technology and security had asked for information on visitor limitations and if there's issues with the visitor, kind of what the staff member should do. So, again, it's very minimal changes. It has been reviewed by our district attorney, Karen Kepel, and we've been given the go-ahead on it. So, it'll be brought forward at August 21st for approval. So, is there any questions about the handbook?
Minimal changes.
Yep.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, Xena Sinbik and John Frye, please come up. We'll talk about the Placement Center Report and Ethnicity Report. John, welcome to your first board presentation. I know we got to meet you a little bit, but this is, is this your first presentation?
Well, second.
Second.
Because I've got an action item tonight, so.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, great.
Well, good evening, Vice Chair Severson, school board members, Superintendent Kelly. Thank you for this opportunity to share about the Placement Center, what its role is in the district and how does it support our families and students here. Again, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunities for every learner. And part of the Placement Center, their core values that it supports here for Columbia Heights is the community, excellence, collaboration, integrity and respect. This is, this is just an informational presentation, and there's going to be no governance question at this time. So, what is a Placement Center? Here's a little bit of an overview and resources. It is one centralized location for questions to be answered, clarification for parents regarding enrollment. It's also our first welcoming experience to the district. This is the first face that people see when they see Columbia Heights. So, the welcoming nature of the Placement Center is one way, or one thing that they do that's very beneficial to our district. It also is a student family intake. They request, request records. They review and verify documentation, like immunizations and transcripts and things like that, special education files, to make sure that we are providing those spectrum of services for students. It also allow, it also has some assessments specific to placement for EL and our English language learners. And then it also provides resources for the health, as well, emotional health, as well as the physical health of students and families. That's provided by our school nurse. And then also additional information, transportation, school boundaries, school supplies, health, immunizations, et cetera. So, those smiling folks are two of the members of the Placement Center staff. The cultural liaison, Louine, who's there on the left in the nice peach outfit there. She is our cultural liaison, and she facilitates new enrollment for the district, and she welcomes people to our district. She's right there at the front lines. The licensed school nurse is Tara Swaby, or Swaby, I'm sorry. And she ensures that immunizations are current. She also provides health resources, both physical and mental health resources for families, if that is needed. We also have an English, English language learner, our teacher, I should say, who is there. Rachel?
Rochelle Kreiser.
Rochelle, thank you. And she supports proper placement of EL students according to the English language level. We also have Marshall Walker, who's our special education coordinator. And she supports families who may, and students who may have a disability, and we need to make sure that we're providing those proper programming and services here in Columbia Heights, are providing them within 916. Also, our early childhood manager is there, that is Tiffany Graham Farcas. She supports enrollment process for our little kids. I think I said that right, but if not, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tiffany. And then finally, our last person, our clerical staff. And you see Bonnie, who's there. She, when I spoke with her last week, she comes in for the month of August to support Columbia Heights and supports the students and families to ensure that they have a smooth transition. She has a lot of historical background that's very helpful to us, but also she does have connections with families who come in. And the other important person is Barb Erickson. Every kid who gets enrolled into Columbia Heights, who is a new enrollee, gets the information to Louine, and Louine gives to Barb, and she enters that into our data management system, every new enrolled student. So, she has a, she's a, you know, she's a huge support. Her and Bonnie help support the process of kids getting enrolled here in the district.
And we also have support from the clerical staff at the front desk here, especially when the Placement Center is not open. So, we have Tanue or Jasmine Fink here, early in the morning or after, after hours, to receive packets or get information. If someone comes in to enroll and it's, you know, 5:59 in the evening, Tanue can hand them a packet and say, here's the information and here's the hours and here's what you can do. So, there, it's a team effort.
It is, right?
All right, so we wanted to provide you with some data. This is, we're going to be looking at data that shows our new student enrollment last year. So, we're not talking about the kids who have already been enrolled previously and are just continuing with us. So, all the students that go through the Placement Center, and here you can see a breakdown by grade. Pretty, pretty typical data. Of course, our early grades, pre-K and kindergarten would be really high. And then again, that transitional grade into ninth grade, another very high grade. So, the total, the total number of students that enrolled through the Placement Center is 1,084 last school year. So, lots of support there for our families. Sometimes they come multiple times for different questions and support. So, we see them, we see them throughout their school, school year as well. So, taking a look at the enrollment by schools and grade levels, here you can see, again, very typical, that your pre-K and K would be higher level. Here you can see the different comparisons between the elementary schools. So, kindergarten at Highland being, you know, an outlier there, pretty high. The others being pretty close together in terms of their, the numbers of enrollees across the other grade levels. At Columbia Academy, this again, typical, that six, more sixth graders that, that transition year would enroll at the beginning of the school year. However, Columbia Academy had some, you know, uniqueness last year. On November 28th, the school board voted to close Columbia Academy due to open enrollment, or to open enrollment due to capacity. And so, you can see before that date, we had 165, 164 new students enroll at Columbia Academy, which definitely put us over, you know, right at that capacity limit. And then, once that was closed to open enrollment, we continued to receive resident students at the rate of 39 students. Moving on to enrollment by grade at the high school. Again, a typical pattern, you would see more kids enrolling in ninth grade and, you know, sometimes it gets lower as you go. Fewer 12th graders are moving around and they're oftentimes wanting to graduate at their school instead of move to the next one. So, taking a look at enrollment, new enrollment by ethnicity. So, who are the kids coming in? So, you can see a small number of American Indian students, a small number of Asian students enrolling in the district, with Hispanic, Black and White being a more significant population. But we wanted to take this one a step further and take this ethnicity data and dig a little bit deeper. So, we work it down by, of the students across the different ethnicities, who, who are resident students and who are our open enrolled students? And so, here you can see that breakdown and really see that, in the blue are our resident students within our school district boundaries, and then in the orange there, the students who are open enrolling. So, you can see across each category, we really, last year, for our newly enrolled students, did have more resident students enrolling than open enrolling students for newly enrolled. Looking at languages, so we've got a rich diversity of languages in our district with 21 different languages being spoken among our new enrollee students. We do actually have more than 21 students across the district, or 21 languages across the district. Here you can see the top, the top number of languages, with English, Spanish and Somali being the highest. And then we have, down in the other category, smaller numbers of other different languages. So, like Vietnamese, you know, one student, for example. And our English language learners, so students who qualify for service based on their screening assessment. You can see the numbers, Valley View being quite high compared to the other, the other buildings. And then with our special education, this number's a bit more similar across the different schools. So, how many drop-ins and visits do we have at the Placement Center? More than 1,200 visits. It's more than that because sometimes people will come in and they'll write down they're going to the family center, and they might drop off a student and go to the Placement Center. So, we've got some additions there, but definitely more than 1,200 visits. So, they are busy. This is a very busy time for them right now, this month. We have some additional staff come in and some teachers come in and help, help, you know, manage all the paperwork and support the families. And it's just a great service that we provide for our families.
It's very interesting information. Thanks for presenting that. It's interesting to see the new student data when it's pulled out from the, yeah.
I guess I do have one, just kind of a quick question. That's kind of an overview. You might not know this specifically. But with, with Columbia Academy being closed to open enrollment, are we noticing any differences within the high school? Like, if a family is trying to, are we hearing any feedback about that? I heard one family tried to enroll elementary, middle school and high school, and they said, bummer about Columbia Academy, but they still did, in fact, enroll because they'd heard good things. But I'm just curious as to if you're seeing any impact on the district as a whole.
I haven't heard any major reports that it was an issue. However, I was in the Placement Center the week, the week, the days after the vote happened, and it was closed, and there were a lot of families that wanted to enroll. And, you know, even, I had one mother say to me, I'm going to move to Columbia Heights then because that's the way that you can get in. So, I said, okay, well, we will be here when you're, when you're here. So, come on back. It's a good place to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but.
Yep.
Yep. Any more questions? All right, thank you. All right, let's hear about the Department of Education Review and Comment. I've been told I'm not supposed to make you do a speech, but I want to say welcome, and we're all looking forward to getting to know you a little bit better.
Thank you.
All right.
Vice Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, Director Humnik and myself, the finance director for the district, are presenting a review and comment. This is just an information item. There's no board action required for this. Board has already taken action and by putting the ballot questions or approving the ballot questions for this November. And this is just a procedural thing that all districts do that have referendum out, presenting their information to MDE, and then MDE giving us a letter back. So, I'll let Director Humnik kind of go through the pieces that are involved in this process. Yeah, it's not the right one.
Minnesota Statute, Section 123B.71, requires a review and comment statement on the educational and economic advisability of your proposed school construction. On July 28th, 2017, Columbia Heights Public Schools submitted a proposal for review and comment to the Minnesota Department of Education. On July 13th, 2018, the commissioner from the Minnesota Department of Education provided the following information based on the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information. documentation and other pertinent information. The Commissioner provided a positive review and comment, indicating the district is fiscally responsible and educationally sound. Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, point 71, requires the Commissioner to include comments from residents of the school district in the review and comment. As of July 13th, 2018, no public comment had been received.
So, just to give you an idea, the report's in front of you guys, that it's a very extensive booklet that gets submitted to the Department of MDE, there's some, six key sections of it, so there's demographic information of the population that the district serves, there's a list of the school facilities, information specifically about the facilities, so that, you know, we're really going into detail, so the Department of Education has that information, we go into detail, or demonstrate the need, the facility needs in the, in the book, or the review and comment, descriptions of the projects that are included at each site, and then specifications on the project financing, where's the money going to come from, and, you know, the total dollars that we're talking about, and then, of course, documentation in the end about what our obligations are, you know, to follow fire code, and all of those other pieces, so, it is a very extensive document, you know, pushing 40 pages, and then, of course, the, you know, the Commissioner reviews it, and we get our letter back, and then that just allows us to proceed, so, I just wanted to add that in there, because that is in your information in the packet as well. Any questions?
This is congratulations and good news, it's always nice when you get something back from the Minnesota Department of Education that says something is educationally sound and fiscally prudent, so, it's nice to get a positive, not everybody does, it's not a given, so it's a lot of work, and thank the Board for putting it out there, and thank the staff for getting it to MDE, and it was great to have a positive comment from the Commissioner, it's because you open that envelope and you go, and so, it was good to see it was positive.
Is this the last step in getting approval for this to be a ballot question then, or?
This, it's part of the process, I mean, you guys have approved to put the ballot question on there, but we can't ask for the bonds unless we have this positive review and comment, which we do, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to some action items, talk about the Metro EXU, do we say that, or we don't spell it out right?
Exu.
Exu, Exu, membership approval. See in a standard.
Vice Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, on June 26th, the Board was presented with information on the Metro EXU, which is a Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit. This cooperative provides high-quality professional development at a reduced rate because of it's a cooperative, also student programming, also purchasing, access to different types of purchasing, also support for special education, assistive technology, they just provide a lot of different services, and the district over many, many years has benefited at being part of this cooperative. It's a reasonable rate, so you can see the cost of membership for the upcoming school year is $3,689.80, so I'm here this evening to seek approval for this membership.
All right, let's have a motion.
No moved.
Second.
All right, Molly Hala, any other discussion? Questions? Are you holding up your, is this like a sign?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I don't know why I was doing.
Non-verbal, an intentional non-verbal. All right, no, all right, looks good, all right, let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Now's your second shot, Mr. Frye. We're going to hear now about the Northeast Metro 916 Special Education and Related Staffing Agreement.
Yes, good evening, again, Vice Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you. On June 26th, there was an informational item, specific to Northeast Metro 916, and an agreement for them to provide special education and/or related services. As I noted in June, we have about 15 staff who support our students here within Columbia Heights, ranging from our licensed school nurse, to our speech, some speech pathologists, to OTs, PTs, and a sundry of different other related services. Additionally, we have over 45 students who access 916's programs in a separate day school in a setting for, to ensure that they make academic and social emotional progress on their IEP goals. So I'm here today to, I'm seeking Board approval for this agreement, to allow them to continue to partner with us and to provide those related services for us here in Columbia Heights.
All right, have a motion on that?
No moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I think we've had a lot of discussions in the past about this, and we've talked about the value that we get from it, and it only makes sense, I think for our district, we really benefit from these services.
This is an action item on our agenda every year, correct?
Yes.
Yep. There's nothing in this that stood out to any of you guys as different or than usual? No. Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Director Hennekenz, come on up, talk about our TIES withdrawal agreement. This is a resolution, correct?
Correct. Vice Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, before you is an action item, resolution, that we recommend for approval. This resolution is, outlines the agreement for final payment, that's the debt payment for distribution of assets and liabilities, in terms of our membership to the organization of TIES. So, you know, we've been through a long process, one-year process of disconnecting from TIES, that became official as of July 1 this year, and we've made our final debt payment, and this resolution outlines that, what that agreement is, with us and TIES for that final debt payment.
All right, so, motion to carry this forward.
No moved.
Lauren? Second?
Second.
All right. I'll read the resolution, I think, first, and then we can discuss it, sound good? All right, it says, "Agreement for debt payment, distribution of assets, and assignment of liabilities upon the withdrawal of Columbia Heights Public Schools from TIES. Whereas Columbia Heights Public Schools District Number 13 has given proper notice to withdraw from the Technology and Information Educational Services Organization, TIES, as of June 30th, 2018, and whereas, in accordance with Minnesota Statute 123A.24, Subdivision 1A and B, Columbia Heights Public Schools and TIES have mutually agreed upon Columbia Heights' share of the debt owed, and the assignment of assets and distributions of liabilities to Columbia Heights Public Schools upon its withdrawal from TIES as permitted by law. Therefore, pursuant to the TIES bylaws and Minnesota statutes, the parties agree as follows. One, Columbia Heights Public Schools has given proper notice of withdrawal under the TIES bylaws, and is withdrawn from TIES as of June 30th, 2018. Two, TIES acknowledges receipt and payment by Columbia Heights Public Schools to TIES, the sum of $103,295.40, being computed at $32.30 for each of the Columbia Heights Public Schools' 3,198 pupils on or about July 3rd, 2018, and its share of the debt incurred by TIES as required under Minnesota Statute 123A.24, Subdivision 1B, due to its withdrawal from TIES. Three, the amount set forth in Section 2 represents a full and final statement of Columbia Heights Public Schools' share of TIES debt, and the assignment of assets and distribution of liabilities between TIES and the Columbia Heights Public Schools, and neither party shall have any future obligation or responsibility to the other based on Columbia Heights Public Schools' payment of this sum. Subject to Columbia Heights Public School Board adoption of the resolution described in Section 4, each party will release each other and indemnify and hold harmless the other party and its officers, directors, employees, and agents from all claims, actions, or suits of any kind or character which arise, which could have arisen from Columbia Heights Public Schools' withdrawal from TIES. As authorized by Minnesota Statute 123A.24, Subdivision 1B, this agreement shall be effective upon the adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing the signing of this agreement by the Columbia Heights Public School Board. TIES Executive Committee adopted a resolution on July 18th, 2018, approving calculation of the withdrawal fee at the per-student fee in the amount of $32.30, and authorized a TIES officer to sign this agreement. A copy of the TIES resolution is included with this agreement. Columbia Heights Public Schools shall provide TIES with a signed copy of this agreement upon passage of this resolution." Any questions?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, all right.
Okay, so I read this here, that we're done with it, this is, this is the end?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and have we, we've, we've had legal counsel?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay.
This has been reviewed not only by our district attorneys, but also by Bloomington and Spring Lake Parks attorneys as well, because we were the three districts that actually withdrew this year, had the opportunity, or were in the pool to review, and the Bloomington fleet of attorneys that they have in-house, coupled with ours, give everything a thorough get-go on this.
Okay, and of course, this also releases any type of claim to any type of assets that might be left over as well, like, for example, the building?
That's true.
Okay, so, okay. I'm good.
So all liabilities and assets, either direction?
Everything is done.
This is our final settlement, I would like to really say that we started at 44, and got to 32-plus, and that's a significant change, and it was a fair change, because they gave it to all three districts, we didn't have to negotiate independently, they took it on face value, and offered everyone the same agreement based on arguments presented.
And we had this payment in our budget, right, but it was actually higher?
It was.
In our budget, we had allocated more dollars for this.
We figured it at 44.
Right, okay.
At one time, were we hearing as high as 70?
Can I remember this?
Okay, yep.
So while we can't take advantage of any of their assets, like if they sell the building, we are just separated and have no further obligations, and we know that they're, as we've talked about this at length, that that amount isn't going to, the 32.30 isn't going to get less.
Nope.
This is the time.
Yes.
Thank you. Just reiterating, this is the end, the end?
Yes.
After two years of the end, kind of?
But we still have products.
There's still, there's still products, but as far as our membership goes, and our ties to, our direct connection to the assets and liabilities, this ends that.
As they say in the legislature, this is in Latin, sine die.
Very good, we're done.
Actually, I do have one other question, it's partly, partly about some of the, some of the stuff that we were using from TIES, I know that we've made some transitions in some areas, is there, are we going to be able to continue using them through a new owner, or are they just going away?
So, yeah, the organization, or the products that the organization, that TIES had, for the short term, I don't know what the long term's going to be with the new organization that's basically taking over, those products pretty much are all available, and we have transitioned off of pretty much everything, you know, there's some still product connections that we have as far as software licensing, that we have to go through them still, but again, our membership and our connection in that way is done, and so, we've been working really hard on that transition, that's consumed a lot of our time, and we're going to continue to work on it through the start of the school year, because there's things that are still, still happening in that transition, but we definitely are better off for it.
Are we doing any collaboration through the 916, I know that they're also doing double, double stuff over there.
We definitely have some collaboration through 916, a prime example of that were our records retention system, so, we've partnered with 916, and using LaserFiche, and so, we actually are getting our licensing through them, so we're getting more for less cost, and so that's an example of partnering with 916 on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? All right, this one's a roll call vote for the resolution. All right, Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, resolution carries, resolutions pass? It's passed. Resolution passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have the AMSD membership update, and that'll be me presenting on that, this is our, the ask to approve our fees to stay a part of AMSD, which is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, for 2018-19, can I have a motion to?
No moved.
Second.
All right, the membership fees, if you look in your board packet, for 2018-19 are $8,317, that is an increase of $167 from the previous year, and this fee is accounted in our budget. For those listening, the AMSD membership gets us a lot of things that we probably couldn't, definitely, definitely couldn't afford if we were to do them on our own, things like educational advocacy for students in the metropolitan area, the example would be a lot of advocacy on behalf of the Special Education Cross-Subsidy that we talk about so often, and there was a crucial part of getting this pushed through to at least a subcommittee for next year's legislative session. They are organizing Reimagine Minnesota, they have a policy conference for us, they do monthly meetings where they give us updates and trends and research, things that are happening in legislation, and they actually give us some advice on how to handle the Department of Education's rules and requirements, so those are just kind of some of the things that AMSD provides for us. So, looking for thoughts and discussion on staying a part of the membership of AMSD. Superintendent Kelly, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that the fee is based on student enrollment, and so it stays about the same every year, and it's an invaluable part of, from a district point of view, we will go down and testify on bills when they ask us to, but they really do the policy on a day-to-day basis, and sometimes, and it was just a few years back when Brooklyn Center and Ridgefield and Columbia Heights felt that they were not getting their fair share of some of the equity aid that they, they went down and made the case for us, and that was improved, and integration aid and things like that. So, although it represents 400,000 students across the metropolitan area, whether you're a small district or a big district, they really do present advocacy for us all, and Scott Krunkquist, who is the Executive Director, is really a fine leader down there, and not only attends his own organizational meetings, but I saw him for three days at MSBA, and at the superintendent's too, to make sure that he's in tune with what everybody else is going forward with.
I actually just noticed that on the, on the background, it's showing the fees of $8,317, but the invoice shows $8,484.
Yeah, you know what, I just see, I see that now, membership through fee.
Okay, so the invoice is incorrect, okay, I just want a clarification.
Yep, I see it here now, yeah, okay, the motion's correct.
Okay.
Got it. Oh, yep, down at the bottom. Approved membership for Columbia Heights Public Schools and the Association of Metropolitan School Districts for the 2018-19 school year, and to authorize payment of dues in the amount of $8,484, just for the record. Any more questions, thoughts?
So did their rate go up, or is it our enrollment that went up, that caused the change?
It's the student enrollment, it's based on enrollment.
Okay, so their rate's the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have a formula, I'm going to say, I want to say that, and the formulas, so it equalizes it out, so that bigger districts probably pay a little bit more value added, but essentially, it's student enrollment.
I hate to make those complicated formulas in education, yep, all right, trend. Any other questions? questions? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Alright, any board topics that people would like to put out there?
We're going to the school year starting.
Yes, it's coming up. I think the obvious, there is a school board preliminary coming up next Tuesday. We encourage people to do their homework and be a part of making an informed decision on behalf of our board. Get out there and vote. Alright, meeting is adjourned at 8:11.